Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone. Here we go, excuse me. Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone to the September 25th, 2025 regular meeting of Forsyth County Board of Commissioners. We had a morning briefing session today. And I'd like to mention, first of all, just to make an announcement for any citizen who's wishing to participate remotely in today's public session portion of the meeting, you may do so by calling 336-422-1200, and you'll be placed on hold until the public session begins. And of course, any member of the audience who wishes to participate in the public session, you just need to fill out a speaker card and return it to our clerk at the end. You could actually do that as we speak. Commissioner Woodbury is actually participating in the meeting remotely today, and actually, Commissioner Woodbury will actually be doing some, all the voting will be pausing for you to vote. I'd also like to introduce, we have a number of young ladies who are here in blue Parkland shirts. Actually, they're a member of a group called the Superintendent's Institute, TSI. And actually, they can range, I found every ninth, I found 10th graders, 11th graders, and 12th graders. I don't think I found any ninth graders, as I kind of just greeted them. And they're here doing, but they actually train all year long, meet once a month, and actually work on everything from sort of emotional intelligence, to civic engagement, to leadership skills. And we certainly appreciate they're coming, and they're actually coming today just to witness one of our meetings, and I suspect you've probably had an opportunity to go to a school board meeting, at least one probably. So with that being said, we're going to begin our meeting with a moment of silence, and we're going to be followed that by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Wilson. I'd like to ask you to stand if you're able, and let's begin our moment of silence now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We actually have our quarterly update from Superintendent Catty Moore, and I'd like to give her a chance to go ahead and go first, so that she has probably a few other activities this afternoon that she'll be able to get to. So thank you for being here, and you've had a busy, I guess, quarter and a half or so since you've been here. So anyway, thanks for being here.
All right. Is the teams up? Should I just go to the present section? I'm trying to find the present button. Okay. There it is. Thank you. Thank you for the invitation to join. I'm here today to bring you the quarterly update from first quarter from the school system, variety of information, including some of our academic progress thus far, and as has been the case recently, a more robust update on what's going on with the finances in the school system. Some district highlights from our performance data. In general information, our 10-day number was 49,224, which is about 1,300 students below our projected number for this year. Day 10 is our first number, the one on which we allocate resources to schools. The numbers that we report to the state of North Carolina are day 20 and day 40 number. We just got our day 20 number. It's a little bit higher, but we're verifying that, and we'll be publishing that soon as well. You see the breakout there in terms of the diversity of students that we serve, including students with disabilities, English language learners, students experiencing homelessness, as well as demographic information. We are about a 30-30-30 district. A couple of state data highlights. We are continuing to improve our overall performance. It was up just a bit at 1.2. I do think it's important to note that we are trending upward, but we are not yet at pre-pandemic levels of performance. And that is a goal that districts really are looking to reach across this nation, and some have and some have not. And we still have a little ways to go before we can get to pre-pandemic levels. Forty-five of our schools met or exceeded growth. We are happy to see that 45 of our schools met or exceeded growth. However, that's just a little bit over half, and really what we want to shoot for is at least 80% of our schools meeting or exceeding growth. Fourteen of our schools improved their performance composite by five points or higher, which is important. Twelve of our schools improved their letter grade. Seven schools came off of the low-performing list. And two of our schools, both high schools, have growth results that are tops in the Couple of upcoming events to make you aware of. Our permanent superintendent search is supposed to begin in October. The board is having some discussions right now about how to stage that out. They're thinking about the next interim that has to come in, maybe staying a little longer and not trying to hire a superintendent in the middle of the year, but perhaps doing that as a July 1 start date. I would agree that generally you're going to have better candidates on July 1 than you might in a February or that timeline. They're discussing that now. On October 14th, we do have our Cook Elementary School consolidation public hearing. This is the next step in the process for the board to make a determination about whether or not they will consolidate, close Cook Elementary after this school year. There are a couple of public information sessions about that decision coming up prior to October 14th. On October 15th, I will deliver to your county manager the quarterly report for Article 46, as we are closing out this month, and then should have that. We will probably deliver it to the board on October 14th at our meeting that day, and then you'll get it as well. You have seen previously that we thought our Ashley Elementary estimate would come in in November. It's now December. The new interim superintendent contract, whoever that is, would begin in December as well as my last day will be Sunday, November 30th. They are, it looks like we've decided that a new superintendent would start July 2026. I knew the board was kind of in the middle of that discussion. And as soon as we get a new superintendent, we also do need to complete that strategic plan process that's kind of been lingering for the past year. Our last strategic plan was slated to end at the end of 2025, but given the transition, we didn't think it was right to start a new plan without having a new superintendent in place. So we've been, we've extended the old plan by about a year, but there's a lot of work that's already been done towards a new strategic plan, and the new superintendent will take that up when he or she starts in July. We have ongoing work around residential boundary modernization. That's kind of, we've had to sort of reframe that a little bit. The board needs to hear a little bit more about that sometime soon, because in having the conversation now about consolidation of schools, those conversations really need to run side by side. So we've stopped a little bit with regards to the boundary discussion in order to make sure that we are integrating all of those possibilities and other things that are coming forward before we present anything. There are some draft maps out there that are available for public comment, and at the end of June, I think it was, the board requested in a workshop additional information around the transportation efficiencies that might be a result of changing the boundaries. So that is something else that has paused the work. Moving on to financial condition and accountability. You've heard a lot of this before, and I'm explaining it a little bit differently as I feel like I'm going on this speaking tour in the community in the last couple of weeks. We have two issues. One issue is the fiscal deficit from '24-'25. That is now currently estimated at around $37 million. It's down from what you saw earlier due to the payment to DPI. Your contribution, of course, helped pay 7.9 million of that. We do owe the state, the county, vendors, and the district. All of those things that we owe ourselves, as well as everyone else, will be a audit finding in our audit until those negative balances are cleared. I just think it's important for everyone to know that until those are cleared, we will continue to have audit findings. The State Board of Education has requested that our board return to their meeting on November 4th in Raleigh to present a repayment plan for the 3.4 million that we still owe the state. They are beginning the interest on that loan at 0.4% as of October 1st, so the interest will begin next week. But they reduced it from the 1% to the 0.4 when we visited them, and well, we asked them to waive it. They did not do that, but they did reduce it to 0.4, and they did ask that it start October 1st. And they want a repayment plan to start by January of 2026. The second issue that we have is balancing the budget for '25-'26. The first one is all the overspending that we did last year and the money that we owe people. The '25-'26 budget is about making sure that, number one, we don't do that again, and number two, that we take into account any other changes that have come up since June 30th, and since the last budget was, the interim budget resolution was put before our board. We have made about $63 million in reductions in personnel and non-personnel for the '25- '26 budget. That includes contemplating the 46 to 48 million that we were over last year, includes some changes that came in the summer. The board appropriated $5 million worth of fund balance at the end of June. Obviously, you know that if you appropriate fund balance for an operating budget, you either appropriate it every year, or you have to remove that amount of money if you don't have additional revenue for the next year. So we needed to remove an additional 5 million for '25-'26. We also have $8 million less in federal carryover funds. Our federal carryover is usually around 15 million. Those funds, federal funds, last for 18 months, but our federal carryover was more like 7 million. It was about 8 million short because we had to use so much of it last year to make sure that we met obligations. So we need to make reductions to account for the fact that our federal carryover is not as high. So that's why you see the number 63 higher than the reductions from what the debt was from last year. The savings or the reductions that we are making for the '25-'26 budget do not impact the '24-'25 debt. We have held spending for all local non-personnel at around 50 to 75%. We have not fully released budgets, either to schools or to central services, in order to make sure that as we bring a final budget resolution, probably sometime in October, that we have the funds and we know what our funds situation are before we release the remaining funds. These additional savings were needed to reach a balanced budget and to avoid another deficit. We've talked about this a little bit before. We've updated our numbers to be a little bit more exact with the specific vendors that we owe. The first one is the substitute management system at 5.7. The SSC is the custodial contract at 4.2, and then the amount that we owe you at just over 5 million. We owe DPI 3.4 million. In previous presentations, you may have seen me put in a number around $2 million that we owe our child nutrition services because we borrowed from their fund balance. I have removed that from presentations moving forward because we didn't actually make that appropriation until July 1. So it's not part of last year's debt. It's part of this year and moving forward. So I'll make that clarity in case you've seen that before. We do still estimate that about 15 to 20 million is what we owe ourselves in local capital and grant funds that were appropriated from the wrong fund and applied towards local costs. And again, these funds will show as negatives in our year-end fund balances in the annual audit. And I think you probably also understand that we'll have to clear all of those negatives before the district can begin to accrue an unrestricted general fund balance. So it's going to be a while, if we don't pay this off, before we can start replenishing our own fund balance. You may be aware that on September 22nd, we had a meeting with our local delegation, and I want to thank the commissioners that were there, Commissioner McDaniel, Commissioner Martin, Commissioner Woodbury. I'm not sure if anybody else was there, but I know I saw you guys there. Thank you for attending. There were some questions through the conversation that came up from the local delegation. They wanted to know about options for increased revenue, what the impact of the RIF was, whether or not there are potential for further reductions to make space to pay debt. And as the district plans for space in our budget for repayment, what's a good faith effort? Lots of questions about what's the plan, right? And those come from everywhere. So when we think about debt repayment for the '24-'25 debt, there's a couple of options really in the simplest of terms. We, as a school district, do not generate revenue. So we either need to receive increased revenue, somebody gives us the funds, or we decrease expenses. One or the other has to happen in order to make space in a budget to pay back debt. Increased revenue could be a direct appropriation from the legislature or the county. There would be no need to repay that. Increased revenue could also be a loan or an advance from the legislature or the county. Repayment there would be required, would likely have an interest rate. The impact of the RIF on the '25-'26 budget is being finalized, and we will need to use, obviously, that impact and that reduction to develop our final budget resolution. Initially, we thought the number of staff that would be impacted would be a little bit over 300. We ended up administering letters, reduction-in-force letters, to 224 staff. Some changes there happened due to some resignations, due to a change in the EC, Exceptional Children's Formula, that didn't have as many reductions as we initially thought it would have. So we're finalizing those numbers to make sure that we understand what the savings will be, and that will be included in our final budget resolution. Couple of additional comments from the meeting. If the '25-'26 final budget that we currently have cannot support a payment plan, what would we do if, based on the reductions we've already made with the reduction in force, there's still not enough room in our budget for a repayment plan? So funds for debt repayment here could come from a couple of other places. We could make further reductions in local staff and non-personnel expenses. Not really crazy about doing that. We could also make reductions in other local expenses, salary supplements, classified local longevity. You know that we have local supplements that we pay to teachers, principals, and assistant And I'll talk more a little bit about that right now. So we've been thinking, maybe, you know, like if we're talking about just the state, a target budget of like $300,000 per month, which would have the loan paid off in about a year or so, if that entire amount were to go to the state, that 3.4, that means we would need about 3 3.6 million in a year if we want to do $300,000 a month. 3.6 million is equivalent to about 48 staff at the average teacher salary range. Doesn't have to be teachers, but that's the, the range that I used, that's 75,000, which includes benefits. It is also equivalent to about 10 to 15% of the local supplement budget, which is the 32 to 34 million that includes teachers' supplement, principals' supplement, assistant principal's supplement, and the local longevity, the classified local longevity that we do. It's about $34 million. I have not included Article 46 as a part of that 32 to 34. And I just need to say that reducing staff or reducing supplements, if you're looking at capturing 3.6 million for a year, and we were trying to pay back $37 million, including ourselves, that's 10 years that you would have to implement those reductions in order to get there. And that's a long time. You know, on, on the other hand, I could take the entire local supplement budget and pay pretty much all of it off in one year. Don't want to do that either, but it would be one year. So all of these things keep me up at night. Some progress made to reduce the budget so far. You are aware that we made some payments to the substitute management system, $1.1 million, and of course, the DPI payment at 7.9, which is why our revised deficit estimate is around 37. We will be finalizing that as a part of the 2425 audit. Our auditors are on site this week finalizing those numbers. I do not think they will give a final report yet. I'm not sure if that's in a further slide, but I'll go ahead and talk about it here. Because of the State Board of Education and the LGC agreeing to conduct an additional review of our internal control processes, our local audit firm that does our financial statement audits has asked to extend the timeline for the delivery of their audit so that it is normally, it would be due by December 31st. But they're asked, they've asked for an extension because they indicate that, number one, a dual engagement would be a problem if there is another audit firm conducting some sort of review at the same time that they are conducting an audit, and their audit does contain one or two questions about internal control processes. It's not an internal control process audit, but it does contain some questions about that. And they want to see what the review from the firm that the State Board of Education and the LGC choose. They want to see that final report since it is about internal controls to make sure it doesn't inform anything in their audit that they need to do before they finalize their report. That's disappointing because we want the audit to be done as quickly as possible, but what they have agreed to do, because they're, they're not pausing their work, they're going ahead with all of their work, they're just saying we can't issue a final report. They will be coming to our October 28th board meeting to present their work thus far to the board that should include numbers. They may not be the final numbers, but they'll be pretty, pretty accurate at that point. You already know about having to use part of the 8.5 to give the charters. Some measures to balance the budget. In April, we did have a central office reduction in force. That was prior to my getting here, it was about 81 positions. In May, we asked schools to make some, some reductions. We gave principals a lot of discretion in how they made this reduction, so it was a little bit of the Wild, Wild West in terms of how that was done. But each school had a target amount and options through which they could make those reductions. That was about almost 8 or 9 million dollars worth of savings for the next school year. In June, we made additional reductions, up to $45 million. This was a lot of contracts, a lot of materials, resources, supplies, some duplication of efforts with regards to things like online resources and trying to not pay for as many of those, and instead create a list of free resources that could parallel some of the ones that we were reducing so that schools would still have options to use for how they supplement core instruction. We opened spending at 50 to 75%. I've already mentioned that. In August, we did the district-wide reduction in force. As I said a moment ago, we administered 224 letters as a part of that reduction in force, and it covered classroom teachers and exceptional children, exceptional children IAs, assistant principals, some clerical support staff in schools, and a lot of staff at central services as well. An additional part of that reduction in force is that many central services staff and some school-based staff who are normally 12 months will go to 10 months in order to generate savings there as well. In September, just this last couple of weeks, once our 10-day enrollment number came in, we made adjustments at schools based on being down by 1,300 students from what was projected. Some of our schools were down, some of our schools were up, some schools lost positions, some schools gained positions. Because it's not a reduction in force, we owe all of those staff a contract for the entire year, so that became a shuffle. Not a great thing to have to do at the beginning of the year, but we were moving staff from one location to another. We did that partially with the RIF, and then we did it again with the reconciliation process after the 10-day count. At this point, staff that need to be assigned to a different location have been assigned. And we are looking at potentially, if I don't get good numbers for the, for the, the final audit that we plan to present to the board, we may need to do a local spending freeze in order to make sure that, that we can come in on budget. That's the 63 million. Couple of RIF updates. I've mentioned this already, 224 reductions and all, all over the place. All hiring does remain frozen at central services and at schools. There are a couple of places where I think we're going to be opening up hiring in schools. We have some needs that we need to address that are, that are earned positions for schools, and so we'll need to look at that, and we've already got a list going. Talked about folks being moved to 10 months' contract, and then we did, I did not mention this, we have implemented an involuntary furlough for all central services staff members for five, eight, or 12 days, and that's based on salary. So lower salaried employees are at five, the middle range is eight, and the highest paid salary, 12 days of furlough. The planning allotment we had was 50,500 from DPI. We dropped it just a bit to 50,549 in terms of how we allotted resources to schools. I've mentioned already, we were down 1,325 from that. The total impact there was 99 positions that we had to reconcile. 71 of those were teachers, 11 were IAs, and 14 and a half, I believe, were clerical support, and then there were a couple of half positions here and there. That has been completed, and school staff reassignments have occurred. Couple of updates around accountability. You are aware the State Auditor Rapid Response Team examined the causes of the 2425 deficit, issued a report with seven findings and an additional assessment. We have created a response and a chart where we are tracking the progress towards addressing all of those findings and that additional assessment. The board just approved on Tuesday the first draft of a policy that will now go out for public comment to create an external audit committee. The external audit committee, as the policy outlines it, will be a group of seven individuals, one chosen by the superintendent, one chosen by the county commissioners, five chosen by another process where people will apply. The, the policy outlines the qualifications and background that you want these folks to have. We want people that are not part of the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools District who have experience and background in finance, CPAs, law, finance, any of those kinds of things, who are interested in volunteering to be part of an external audit committee. Their responsibilities will include reviewing the scope of work of our audit firm and how they are auditing our financial statements, to be in touch with the audit firm while they are auditing the financial statements, to make sure that staff are providing on a timely basis all the materials that the auditors need, and sort of be a liaison there. The external audit committee members will also review the final audit of the external, the external auditors for those findings, and they will also be a part of reviewing the district's response to those findings. And then, once the audit is done, and there are findings, and we, the district has responses to those findings, the internal audit committee will then also be responsible for ensuring that staff are following up on the actions that are necessary to correct those audit findings. Those pieces have been missing. And so we, we do believe that this is also a really good way because we're using folks that are out in the public and in the community to help be a part of rebuilding that trust and confidence with third-party eyes on the work that we're doing. Your manager did ask whether or not it would be possible for the process for the individual that would be selected by the county commissioners run through your existing process, which we don't think will be a problem. We'll just give you the qualifications and criteria that we've established, and then you can do it the way you always do it. The, I mentioned already, State Board of Education and the LGC have requested a review of our internal control procedures. What we know right now is that the State Board of Education will probably, will be taking that up in their October meeting next week. Not sure if they're reviewing firms, if they're reviewing the scope of the engagement, one or both of those, but it, it's in, in their hands right now. We are on the receiving end of whatever they decide to do. And, and just as a reminder, whatever that scope of that engagement is, Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools does have to pay for it. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have several questions, but I'm not going to ask them now because the interest of town, but I do have one, and the questions that I got, I will send them to the county manager, and she can pass them on to Ms. Moore. One of the questions that has been of, well, not any more interest than others, and that's the state audit, which we got. And I had wondered all along, until we got that, of where money could keep coming from, if someone within the system had money to, or get it from somewhere other than the county that couldn't get it from the county because the managers and the finance office, they just sent the allocation on the time it was to send it. And I kept wondering, where's this money coming from, or at least some of it, to, to move it around? And I thought, well, it, it must be a way that they can get, probably not from a federal, but from the state's system, and it turns out that there was something in there that allowed it, that if you know the right things to do, the state system allows school districts to override the system in some way. And one of the numbers, I can't start to remember all of them, but one of the numbers about the overriding of the system, state system, and it sending money to the district, was it had been, if I'm remembering correctly, and if I, if I'm wrong, anyone wants to can correct it, one of the numbers was it was overridden 200 times.
I'm not sure about the state, but I do know that in terms of keying in obligations and approving those obligations to be paid, it was, I think, 330 times that the override sort of button to allow to pay something that wasn't in the budget, that happened over 300 times. And there is, this is sort of a, it's a, from what I can tell, I believe that there's a cash flow thing going on. We have a, an account in which local funds sit, grant funds sit, our fund balance sits. It's, it's all in the same account. And when a bill comes in and you look to see what your balance is in your checking account and whether or not you can pay it, the folks who were paying bills, well, the folks who were approving the payment of bills weren't distinguishing between, is it a Fund 8, is it a Fund 4 local, is it a Fund 8 local, Fund 4 local, Fund 2 local, fund balance? All of those are in the same account. It is how over $20 million worth of fund balance was spent without board approval. So, and that's a finding that's in there as well, because it was, it was about cash flow. The money was there, but that's not what it was designated for. Between that and the hundreds of millions of federal dollars that came as part of the pandemic relief, and those funds ended September 30th, 2024. So it makes complete sense that between September 30th, 2024, and the end of 2025, all, you know, everything came home to roost. The money wasn't there.
Did, did the state finally stop the override from being done?
We stopped it. We have a new, we have a new ERP system called Tyler, and the ability to override if the budget is not there is not accessible. So you can't do it. The way, the way the, it works now is you're required to enter the budget, you're required to put in the projected amounts you're going to spend out of that budget. If for some reason you have to go over what's in the budgeted amount, you are required to make a transfer from another place that has the funds before it'll allow you to process it. That was not the case in terms of how we were operationalizing it prior. Could have been, should have been, but that's not what was happening. But the system now will not allow you to do that. So that, that will be helpful.
Could you address who approves that transfer?
Yeah, there, I mean, the, the only, the, the, the only person that can approve all of that when the budget is not there is the CFO.
And in lieu of not having a CFO?
Oh, so right now?
Right.
Well, so right now, the, the budgets right now belong to the individual departments based on the funds that are verified as being there. But the, the number of people that have to review it is now a lot longer than it used to be. So it, it goes from whoever keys in the requisition to the cabinet member who is over that department to make sure that it's an approved expense. It then goes to the folks who manage the Tyler ERP software, who also can verify that, that everything is proper. It, it goes through three or four people before it even gets to finance.
And what portion of that are you responsible for as the interim superintendent?
I am, what I look at, I don't, I don't approve or not approve any of it. None of it comes to me. None of those expenditures come to me. But what I am a part of is creating the initial budgets for every division and department and ensuring that they are within funds that are available. It's why we have not released but 50 to 75% in some areas, because we can't verify that those funds are necessarily available yet.
Got a real quick question on Article 46. I, I know you mentioned October 15th. I assume what you're really providing is the reconciliation of FY25's Article 46.
I can do both. I can probably do both.
Well, that, that's one, I mean, of that, but it's, I, I would be very interested in knowing, under your current staffing that you have now, what is your, because you haven't changed the amounts of the, that people receive in supplements on the, over the Article 46 because you have this fairly simple schedule. You could actually, I'd be curious to know how the projected Article 46 compares to what is now obligated for FY26 in that, because that has to be a delta now.
It should be.
There should be.
It should be.
So knowing, knowing that in addition to what I, I think the October 15th is really just a reconciliation of last year.
It's, it's not. In the budget ordinance, the schools now have to provide us with monthly reconciliation reports, so this is quarter one for fiscal year 26.
Yeah, because we have, we have actually reconciled the FY25 because there is, it was, there was a $381,000 deficit on that one. So some, something number like that, which we say, we'll let that work out later because there, there ought to be, so if you've already done this, or you, there should be a surplus building.
We had, we've had that conversation. We want to take a look at it.
Yeah, so just to clarify, for FY25 reconciliation, I think one of the previous meetings, interim superintendent Moore came, she provided an account of everything that they paid out for FY25 and showed how the local supplements worked and kind of all of the complexities of that. And then we're talking about for quarter one of FY26, we will get that in October. I think what you are alluding to, Mr. Chair, which I've not given a memo to the full board yet, but I did mention this to interim superintendent Moore, and we'll get it out to the full board, we just reconciled our sales tax for FY25, which shows that Article 46 for FY25 came in lower than budgeted by about $380,000, something like that. And so our hope is that when interim superintendent Moore comes in with her projections for quarter one, it will help us to one, it will help us to determine whether or not they likely can absorb that within the FY26 budget, but towards the later part of the year, so probably May-June. So, we would essentially, similar to last year, take that back as part of their allocation, but we want to see where they are before we do that.
And the, and the anticipation is that due to the reduction in force and fewer staff, that we contemplate being paid the local supplement, that there will likely be room to absorb that amount. But we need to verify that.
Good. And that, that's what I was speaking of, just simply looking at who you have staffed and what our budget for FY26 is. That's all I'll ask in the interest of time, too.
Dr. Moore, this is information that you have already provided in response to some of the earlier questions, but it would be helpful in terms of increasing public confidence by showing what accountability measures are already in place. If you or someone on your staff could provide in as close to layperson's language as possible, a comparison of then versus now in terms of overriding a budget limit, you know, how that was so apparently readily done previously, and the steps required to do it now. I get those questions, and when I simply say they are already implementing improved internal controls, you know, the response I get is what? If I can provide that information, I hope it would be helpful.
I appreciate that question. I think we can certainly put something together for ourselves in terms of what we know we're already doing. And I'm hopeful that the review that's coming of our internal control procedures will provide additional insight into that as well, and if there are areas for improvement, that we will do those there obviously as well. But we can, we can put something together about what we're doing already. The then and now sounds, that's actually a really good idea.
Thank you.
Dr. Moore, I'll make my comments brief. Previous to you, your predecessor, I told her that heavy is the head that wears the crown, and I appreciate you being here and your transparency for the time that you've been here. There are some things that could have, in my opinion, with a riff, happened previous to the start of school that would not have been so much of a disruption. And I talk about that because it's a economic impact to Forsyth County as a whole. So, as a commissioner, when I'm seeing things like that, it's troubling for me. Listening is also important, and your school board, the school board just has a hard time listening. And I will say that because for many, many years, previous to even me, I think Commissioner Martin has offered that we have, you guys get some support in Raleigh. Representatives Lambis' last comment before he left, when we talked about getting some assistance by way of either an appropriation or loan, he said that you need someone in Raleigh to advocate for you. So, I'm assuming that at this point, if you put someone on the ground now by next April, that could possibly happen. Before I got on this board, we didn't have lobbyists advocating for us, and I will tell you that Ashley has done a tremendous job. So, again, I'm hopeful that they will hear that, even if you're not here, pass that on to the next superintendent, but something needs to happen in order for us to save Forsyth.
I, I can tell you that we have drafted letters to the education committees and both-
It's not the same. I will tell you, I've been in Raleigh for many years.
I understand what you're saying, to offer to meet with them. Lobbyist, you pay your lobbyists?
You do, but even when you pay them, you, you're asking for an $11 million consensus, right? So, do the math.
I understand.
Okay. So, I'm done.
I appreciate that, and I will certainly take that back.
Sure. Thank you.
And, and Ms. Chairman, I'd just like to, one point of clarification. The county currently does not have the statutory authority to loan money to the school system. That's come up several times. We don't have that authority. If the state were to pass a bill giving us that authority, that would be different. But at the present time, the county cannot loan, loan money to the school board.
Well, I didn't, I think that you were addressing Commissioner Martin, but my consensus talking about the loan was by way of the state and Representative Lambis' response to us in that meeting, right? Yeah. But speaking of loan and grace and forgiveness, you know, the county, you do owe the county a debt, and I'm working with my colleagues to work on consensus to forgive what's owed. So, thank you.
I appreciate you guys even choosing to have the conversation at any point. Ultimately, it's, ultimately, that's your call. Right now, I am just thankful for the grace and the patience as we work through it, especially with the other vendors that we have in place as well.
We do have a copy of this PowerPoint now that's in here. It has, it has changed some over, and I would like to just have this copy.
Yes, we'll email it out, and we will also attach it online after the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for coming.
Appreciate it.
All righty. We are now, I think I'll save the project flower to the NFS. Okay. The first item of the agenda is approval of minutes for the meeting of September the 11th, 2025. Do we have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Bessie. I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. And we need to call on Commissioner Woodbury. Commissioner Woodbury, we need your vote on the minutes. Go ahead.
Chairman Martin has requested a vote for approval of the meeting, of the meeting
Can you hear me?
We heard you, Commissioner Woodbury, but we haven't heard you say yes.
I did say yes.
Heard you that time. All righty. Madam Clerk, do we have any calls or cards for the public session?
Mr. Chairman, we don't have any callers, but we have four speaker cards.
All right.
The first speaker is Karen Cuthrill. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, everyone. Karen Cuthrill, 500 West Fifth Street. In 1971, my grandparents, Hubert and Dally Cuthrill, were forced to sell that home at 711 Graham Avenue to the Redevelopment Commission of Winston-Salem. Their house was not blighted. It was a place of dignity and pride. We had grapevines in the yard, apple trees out back, a front porch for the neighbors to sit and family to sit, and a screen porch for family gatherings. It was their land. It was their property. But their story was not unique. Between 1958 and 1978, thousands of black families in Winston-Salem were displaced in the name of urban renewal. Beautiful homes, thriving businesses, and whole neighborhoods were erased. Families lost the generational wealth, equity they had built without, with sacrifice. Communities that once leaned on each other were scattered around the city. What replaced them was not renewal, but empty lots and broken promises. My grandparents lived up the street from Skyland Elementary, where my father graduated in eighth grade. And many of you may not know the deep history of Skyland. It began with Dr. Malloy, a black physician. As a matter of fact, his son delivered me at KDB Hospital, who first owned the land. He later sold the land to the Reynolds family, who built what became known as Skyland Farms. That is how Skyland came to be. But where did the name Skyland come from? Why was it called Skyland? You may not know. Does anyone know? Community knows why. We know why. And this is our history that's been passed down and preserved through memory and deserves, deserves to live long after we do. The students behind me tend to experience our history. It can if Skyland is restored to the rightful purpose as a community hub, a place where history, culture, education, economic mobility, and connection are honored and carried forth. Yet today, in 2025, the cycle threatens to repeat itself. The same system that displaced my grandparents under the Redevelopment Commission now moves to take Skyland, this time under the banner of affordable housing, that is not affordable to the residents in the unit, in the community, and it is not alignment with your 4025 plan. The upset bid process, which we're participating in, places profit over people once again on a piece of county property that you did not even know you had, and the community residents did not know about it before it was available to purchase. To continue this legacy of displacement would further dishonor the sacrifices of families like mine. Black history is going to be erased once again. I stand before each to ask, stop the bid process. You have the power. You have the power. Return Skyland to the community so it can fulfill its true purpose, a hub of history, learning, culture, economic mobility, and connection for East Winston. Skyland is our history. Skyland is our legacy. Skyland is our land, going back to Dr. Malloy. Give it back to the community where it belongs. Hubert and Dally May Cuthrill were my grandparents. Hubert and Dally May Cuthrill. Hubert and Dally May Cuthrill.
Ms. Castle, can you begin to wrap up?
Say their name. Thank you.
Mike Barisi, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Mike Barisi. My address is 3331 Healy Drive. Last time I was here, we had a couple of people in the audience intimidate my elected officials. And I'm here to say that that's not going to happen, okay? Not while I'm here. I'm here to protect each and every one of you to the best of my abilities, even though you are different, you're different voters than I am. You are our elected officials. We voted you in, and everybody has to stand up and say, no more. Don't intimidate our elected officials, okay? Each and every one of us has to say that. I'm here to protect you, 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 and you. And I want everybody to say that. Everybody that has a voice, everybody that is getting intimidated, our elected officials are getting intimidated. We need somebody to stand up and say, that's not going to happen anymore, okay? Nobody's going to intimidate you while I'm here. And if they do, they're going to hear from me. I don't want you being intimidated, any one of you being intimidated. We elected you, and you're doing the best that you can for us. And I'm not going to have anybody intimidate. So, if you ever get a chance to stand up in a meeting like this and address your elected officials, say, that's not going to happen while I'm around, okay? Last time I was here, some cupcake said that he was going to do a parade. He turned around to the audience, the same people that were intimidating you, said, stop, stop the fighting. He was, I don't, I don't know what he was doing when he was saying, stop the fighting, because saying, stop the fighting, is not working, okay? We can advocate for peace, but they are not, all right? They're not advocating for peace. Whatever you say, you say, don't, do not. I don't know. You can say, I don't advocate for peace. I don't know. I'm not going to let that happen, and my voice is going to say, no, no more. Thank you.
Marcy West, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Commissioners. Marcy West, 331 Carolina Circle, and a candidate for candidate commissioner in District B. I just wanted to, first of all, just say how thrilled I am to see that there are students here who are following what we're doing, and it's great to have as many people here observing, participating in the process as we possibly can, so thanks for coming. Second of all, I wanted to talk about the morning work session, which I thought was excellent. With the community grant process discussed, the economic development and community development discussed, as well as the infant mortality, and I wanted to mention that because folks may not be aware that there was a morning session, that those important issues were discussed. I also wanted to further just touch upon the community grant process. I'm very happy that that was discussed. I think it's really important. It's useful to have staff bring this up so they can clarify exactly what needs to happen there. It was great to have, it seems like there were some decisions made on whether you're going to use capital or not, and that was sort of maybe in a very specific point. You decided you didn't want any carve-outs for special recurring grants. But the, really the main thing I think that really wasn't decided and needs to be decided is around how you're going to actually handle this whole idea of community grants. Are you going to come up with a, a set level that you're going to set aside and move outside of the operating budget to be considered by the commissioners or not? And I think it would definitely be worthwhile for you to really decide that and do that early enough that people know what the process is going to be. One of the things I've found in watching the budget process over the past two years is that the community grants are very important to the community. There are hundreds of people who come. We go to the overflow. So, I think just saying we're not going to have any community grants is really not a viable option if you're listening to your constituents. I think it's really important to note, too, it's less than 1% of the budget. So, the amount of time that's spent discussing this really does, as, as Commissioner Bessie said, sort of overwhelm the rest of the process. So, talking about those budgets earlier, the community grants earlier, making some decisions, coming up with some thoughts on that, makes a lot more sense. It, that would allow you to really remove that from the process. Let, let the community have some input, listen to what they say, and then move on to the bigger portion of the budget, which is, you know, as I said, it's less than 1% of the budget. If you look at the pie chart, it doesn't even show. So, it's, it's really important that you do that. I would also really hope that you will not move to a point where you will cut funding once it has been committed to an organization. These organizations are tiny. They don't have a lot of money, and they're relying on this, and so not doing that, I think, is wise. So, thanks very much. Appreciate it.
The last speaker is Kwame Kia Shavers. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, and I love how you pronunciate my name correctly. My name is Kwame Kia Shavers, address 3850 Heather V. Lane. Good evening, county chair, county commissioners, and county manager. During my attendance at the Forsyth Legislative Delegation Meeting at the Board of Education, Representative Dunney Lambert and Representative Jeff Zinger did bring up two great points that I believe that the Board of Education should implement, because I do think that it's not great that we come before you and ask so much of you, but then not ask of the Board of Education to put forth some additional parameters to make sure that they have funding, because this could easily happen again next year, the year after that. And they do need to implement an opportunity for a paid lobbyist to go down to Raleigh and represent our county specifically. We're the fourth largest county in North Carolina, and we do need someone down there advocating for our needs. Also, that they need to build a relationship with the educational committee, with the state. I know that that will be a lot to, to drive down to those meetings, especially sometimes they cancel them, because I've been to several of them, where they have canceled the committee meetings. But it is worth it, because building that relationship with them will help garner likely more money for us in the future. However, my ask was- However, my ask was to, two things from the county, was to consider forgiving the $5 million, and also to loan $10 million. But I just heard the county, county attorney say that that's illegal, right? That we can't do that. So I was going to ask for a loan, but can you just give it to us since you can't loan it to us? I'm a little bit confused, because I know you paid that $5 million debt, and I thought that they had to pay that back, which would mean that that's a loan, right? But since you can't do that and it's illegal, can you give us the $10 million, and also forgive the $5 million that you paid earlier? Because the Superintendent Dr. Moore said that, right now, of the $36 million, her focal point was $20.1 million, and that would help alleviate, excuse me, that would help prevent an additional rift before the year is out. And I don't want to see any more teachers lose their jobs, because right now there's no more ancillary things that you can cut other than people and staff, right? Which is our educators. So I was wondering if you guys could consider alleviating, forgiving, excuse me, the $5 million that you've already given us, I think that covered some bills for the Sheriff's Department, and if you could also please consider giving us $10 million. I know that's a lot. I'm also going to go to the city, and I'm going to hound them just like I hound you guys, so don't feel like you are the only ones that are being called out, because I go to the city and ask them for money, too, because this is our city, and this is our county, and we need to take care of it, and I'm afraid of what's going to happen if we don't step up and step in. And you guys should be, too, because even if you are not reelected the next time, you still have to live here, you still want a good legacy for our city and our county, and you should think about that when you're making decisions in reference to our school district. I know they messed up real bad, but somebody's got to help them, and it looks like it's going to be us. Have a blessed day.
Madam County Manager, I think we're ready to continue with the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, Commissioners, staff, and guests. The agenda items before you have been briefed, and hopefully questions answered. Agenda item number three is an amendment to the fiscal year 26 budget ordinance to budget for five additional firefighter positions at Byanna Fire Department. The total cost of five additional firefighter positions comes to $334,486 at $66,897 each.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Question approved by Vice Chair Wizinut.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Wilson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. A vote from Commissioner Woodbury.
Aye.
Agenda item.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Agenda item number four is an amendment to County Capital Projects Ordinance to appropriate bond premium from the sale of the 2025 general obligation two-third bonds, and an amendment to the Education Capital Projects Ordinance to appropriate bond premium from the sale of the 2025 general obligation two-third bonds. $2,121,992.95 of bond premium was received. $354,368.35 was spent on issuance costs, and the remaining amount available for allocation to capital projects is $1,767,624.60. This final amount will be allocated by percentage to the designated purposes as follows. For the county, $1,148,955.99, which is 65%. For the schools, $530,287.38, which is 30%. And for the community college, $88,301.23, which is 5%.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Approved by Commissioner McDaniel. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Bessie. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Woodbury.
I did have some questions. I didn't hear you backswing the discussion.
Go right ahead, you can do that.
Yes, thank you. So I was trying to determine if the votes would be taken based on Amendment A and Amendment B, because although I agree with the Part B, I don't agree with Part A. And I think last time when we voted on this, they were kind of separated.
I actually, I, I would maybe just suggest that we, if you're, at least I've already heard six votes, I would encourage you to vote no, and then we're finished. So what would you like, what would you like to vote on?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that again?
How would you like to vote? Because essentially, I don't see, there's, is there, is there a desire to divide up and split Amendment A and B? It seems to me it was designed for a single action because they're both related.
Yeah, Chairman Martin, for me, I mean, if we were going to do that, what is the rationale?
Perhaps, Commissioner Woodbury, you could explain what your opposition is to whichever one it is, Amendment B or A.
Yeah, so, okay, yeah, I think I heard you. So my opposition is based on, I think, when we were briefed on why the county manager was actually asking for the premium due to some maintenance concerns that had been delayed previously by Commissioners. So therefore, generally, premiums would be, could be used all for schools. And so I was for definitely a higher percentage of the premium dollars going to schools versus the county. Since if previously the Commissioners had taken care of maintenance issues versus, as we were told in a briefing, taking money from the maintenance and putting it towards newer projects, then we wouldn't be in the need right now for these pre, more premium dollars going towards the county. So that's why I am in support of, of course, giving the premium dollars to the schools, but not the higher amount to the county.
I think we agreed on the distribution formula some time ago, and it basically is kind of a pro rata share of the bond premiums. So I think that's pretty straightforward. I think we've already agreed upon that, and I would just like to, is there, I'd just like to ask, is there any other discussion on this item?
So, Commissioner Martin, I just wanted to reemphasize that on May the 8th, you are correct, our Board of Commissioners approved that resolution with regards to the percentages. So I'm okay with moving forward with this agenda item. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yes, sir. The, I was just looking at the background information, because I thought that I recalled that our May 8th vote dealt with the anticipated amount. The, the bond premium came in at higher than anticipated, and the expenses involved came in at lower. So there is an additional $452,000, roughly, of net bond premium available to appropriate towards capital projects. According to the board's adopted percentages, the briefing material, well, the executive summary indicates that an additional $89,000, roughly, would be for the counties, $311,000 for the schools, and $51,000 for the community college. Is that an error? I need to check with the county manager.
I'm going to ask Adam Farnbach to come up, as he worked with our Deputy CFO Lee Plunkett to prepare this item, just to clarify. And also, Mr. Farnbach, if you can also clarify, when we went out with these bonds, and Terry Goodman, our CFO, can as well, did they approve the percentages, like when we had the board come, or was it really more about the purpose?
While, while he's coming forward, my, my memory is that, in, back in May, we agreed on that distribution percentage.
No, you absolutely did. I think my question is, was that part of the, like, the bond package? That it, that, because you all approved that, was it based on percentage? Or if there's an overage, then the board can choose to, to use the overage anyway, if that makes sense?
Got it. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just pulling up to the specific pages of the item, in my paper, sorry. So, sorry, let me just make sure I've got everything in order here. I do not have a calculator in front of me, which is a bit of a shortcoming here. That's the old item.
If you'd like, we could skip this one, give Mr. Farnbach a little bit of time to work through the numbers, and then I'll call you back up at the end.
Okay, we can do that. We'll return to item four.
Okay. Thank you.
All righty, we're, we're ready for item five.
Okay. Agenda item number five is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with Medic Staffing Solutions LLC to provide temporary employment services for clinical operations at the Forsyth County Department of Public Health. This would provide temporary physician assistants, nurse practitioners, and phlebotomists in the public health department for sexually transmitted infections, family planning, tuberculosis, and immunization clinic. This contractual amount is not to exceed $75,000.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Question approved by Commissioner McDaniel. Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any discussion? None. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Woodbury.
Aye.
Thank you.
Agenda item number six is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with Laboratory Corporation of America Holdings to provide off-site testing for the Department of Public Health. This contract is not to exceed $71,000.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Question approved by Vice Chair Wizinut. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Woodbury.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number seven is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with Neighbors for Better Neighborhoods approving a violence interruption program. This is for the Cure Violence Program, and the contract is not to exceed $273,738.80 and concludes June 30 of 2026, and this is in this year's budget.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Question approved by Commissioner Bessie.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wilson.
Question.
Yes, questions, discussion?
This is 273. Does that represent the full amount of what, what's in last year's budget?
So in.
Or does it indicate the county's part of it?
So for this year, this is the county's portion. We rolled over gun and gang violence funds that we had in the budget to cover the cost. Previously, it was ARPA dollars.
Well, previously was funds by the, ARPA funds.
Yes, sir. It was ARPA funds that was shared by both the city and county, each paid half. And this year, the city had about $65,000 that they rolled, that they, that was remaining that they rolled over, and the remaining were covering with the gun gang violence funds.
Is all of the ARPA funding of everything exhausted now from the federal government?
Pretty much, yes, sir.
Well, from things we talked about this morning, this could be one as, to have a question about with some of the other things and this outside funding. Are they work, what, are they working in this program only in the city or the county, too?
It is in the city. It's in Police Beat 222, which is primarily the Cleveland Avenue area. That is, based on the data, one of the highest crime areas. That's why it was selected.
Well, city, city folks pays taxes, too, but still, it's a matter that needs to be looked at next go-around.
Yes, sir.
I would like to state that I will vote in opposition. If the city doesn't feel that it's worthwhile, then I don't see why we have to pick up our half when they're not picking up their half, and all the proceeds are going to one section in the city. So I'll be voting in opposition.
Pros or discussion?
I will say that, yes, Commissioner Wizinut, it is very disturbing that the city of Winston-Salem does not participate in this Cure Violence Program, knowing, again, that Cleveland Avenue, we do have a problem with gun and gang violence. So with that being said, I do want to support that, but I would admonish our city of Winston-Salem, City Council representatives to come to the table and support in the future. Thank you.
Well, can it not? Mr. Bessie, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mr. My understanding was that this is money that was already included in our budget, and this is simply executing the contract to do the work that we anticipated in the budget would be done. So it's, it's not as though we are appropriating new money today, we're simply authorizing the execution of the contract to implement money that we'd already budgeted. And I, I do understand, I hear the, the concern that the city is not joining in, into this, and we can certainly communicate that, that message through manager to manager.
Well, I, it would seem to me that, I'll make the rest of my part of it simple, and part of it, I just won't even say, that the area that they're working in, if they could not work in a larger area within a city, or wherever there is, they got the major problems, they could at least do that, but next year, before budget time, or when you go over these other things, be sure that this one is, or all of, all these line items, it's easy to overlook, I guess, for me.
I share Commissioner Wizinut's concern about the city not supporting this type of proposal. It's always a concern when that happens, and they're not working in sync with the county. I did read the report, though, through, and it's quite compelling, I have to say, based on the extensive work they're doing. There's some areas I would hope they would do more, but it looks like a very intelligent approach to this has been made, from gang violence to opioid use, and hopefully, this is something that will bear fruit. We'll see what happens, if it's approved.
Any further discussion?
Yes. I would just like to highlight, I guess, the fifth paragraph in the resolution where it says, whereas because MBN has successfully run the Cure Violence Program for a number of years, and because we are in the middle of a fiscal year, and it would not be practical to seek other providers at this point. And so what I hope the county would be very considerate of is that to, for us not to fund the program is going to put this project at that much more of an unfortunate situation. The project cannot help, the city is not willing to ideally do what it said it was going to do, which is partner with us to run this program that has been successful, especially as it relates to the violence that's going on in particular parts of this county, and especially with our youth. So whereas we see youth are having to pay for the consequences of the dillies of adults from the school system, I would think that our young people in the county wouldn't have to bear additional burden because adults are not ideally doing what we said we would do. Of course, obviously, the county is trying to move forward with what we said we were going to do. I don't know what's, per se, the issue is with the city, and I'll hold any evaluation of that, because I have not spoken with anyone on that side. But I would highly encourage us, in light of what this program is trying to do with violence and its disruption amongst our juveniles or our young people in the county, that we move forward and then give the project or program at least another six months to figure out how to get additional funding. Thank you.
I just like, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, in response to that, Commissioner Woodbury used the word "considerate," and so I'll also use the word "considerate" too. It just might turn out that the county might be more considerate than the city on this matter.
There's one comment I would make, is that my memory, which is not as good as it used to be, back when we discussed this during the budget cycle. it used to be, back when we discussed this during the budget cycle, there was some belief that the city may decide to support or not support. I don't know that they said, I don't remember when they said no.
They said no. What they were willing to do was roll over the remaining amount, which was $65,000.
Okay, so essentially, the city's contribution is not zero this year. It is $65,000, and we're supporting it at nearly three times that amount.
That appears to me to be more considerate.
I'd say the county's being way more considerate. I think you all will recall, it was a research-based program. We spent a lot of time on this back during COVID, and it is a promising practice. And I read that report also, and I, clearly, I think finishing this year is well worth that investment. We'll have more data. I was actually thinking, we looked at the number of youth homicides today that were in our report of seven. And I don't have that by the precinct, but I'm pretty sure that none of them were in that area. That'd be a great thing to just double-check. I, I, I don't, because we didn't have it broken down by area on the, on the health report, but I don't think there were. So, I mean, I think it's, knowing that, and perhaps have an additional, I think sending a copy, regardless what, how this motion goes, sending a copy of the evaluation report to the city would be a good thing. We did, in fact, approve it as a part of our budget. We took the $65,000 apart. We did include an additional 272. We did identify some of our money we have spent in the gang violence area and moved into that area to support it, which is not additional taxpayer dollars in this project. No additional taxpayer dollars. So in that case, I, I, I feel very comfortable supporting that. With that said, any other discussion?
Thanks.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
If, my hearing was, it passed six to one, is that correct? I'm sorry, I didn't hear everybody. Six to one. Okay.
Agenda item number eight is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with Overdrive Digital, Inc. This is a three-year contract in amounts not to exceed $121,163.57 for the period beginning July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026; $118,367 for the period beginning July 1, 2026, through June 30, 2027; and $118,367 for the period beginning July 1, 2027, through June 30, 2028, in a total amount not to exceed $357,897.57.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
motion approved by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Limble. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Woodbury?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number nine is a resolution selecting and awarding a contract to SMME, Inc., for the watershed dam strap grant project in an amount not to exceed $203,989.
Do we have a motion?
Move of approval.
motion approved by Vice Chair Wizard Hunt, second by Commissioner Limble. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Woodbury?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 10 is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of additional grant funding from the North Carolina Department of Transportation and FAA to fund the airfield lighting and signage project at Smith Reynolds Airport, and a resolution authorizing an agreement with AFCON Engineers and Planners, Inc., to provide construction phase services for airfield lighting and signage at Smith Reynolds Airport, and an amendment to the County Capital Projects Ordinance to increase intergovernmental revenue and increase a transfer to the general fund for the airfield lighting rehabilitation project at the airport, and an amendment to the fiscal year '26 budget ordinance to accept a transfer from the County Capital CPO from the airfield lighting project. Essentially, the North Carolina Department of Transportation agreed to increase state aid by $641,155.50 with a local match of $71,239.50. And the FAA has agreed to increase federal funds by $98,759.70 with a local match of $10,973.30. And Forsyth County has a master service agreement with AFCON Engineers and Planners to perform construction phase services for the airfield lighting and signage project, and has provided the county a task order 2025-1 in the amount of $822,128 to perform the necessary work.
Is there a motion?
Move of approval.
Motion approved by Commissioner Wilson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Woodbury?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 11 is a resolution authorizing execution of a contract with Ferragut Systems, Inc., for cloud hosting services for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, North Carolina Property Tax System Software. This agreement is from October 1, 2025, through June 30, 2028, in an amount not to exceed $1,7,625 for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2026, in an amount not to exceed $150,675 for each fiscal year thereafter during the term, subject to annual adjustments based on the Consumer Price Index.
Move of approval.
motion approved by Vice Chair Wizard Hunt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Woodbury?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 12 is a resolution declaring certain county-owned personal property surplus and authorizing its disposition by Public Electronic Auction Utilizing Liquidity Services Operations LLC. This is essentially GOV deals. It is scheduled to begin on October 6, 2025, and will end on October 20, 2025.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
motion approved by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Woodbury?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
I'm going to go back to number four and ask Adam Fernbach to come back up. Again, this is the amendment to the County Capital Projects Ordinance to appropriate bond premium from the sale of the 2025 general obligation to third bonds, and an amendment to the education CPO for the same bond premium.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So I have reran, I have, you know, opened up my computer, if you saw me typing way back there. What I can tell you is that the amendment, as, as written, the amendment piece does not match a 65%, 30%, 5%. But the numbers you get to at the end get you to 65% county, 30% schools, and 5% Forsyth Tech. And part of the reason for that is that the debt issuance costs were assigned between those three purposes based on the overall amount of the bond issue, which, due to the amount of the Ashley Reserve, is overwhelmingly schools. The debt as a whole is more schools' percent than the premium allocation of 30% is. So when those bond savings, or when the cost of issuance came in lower, that results in a bigger change to the schools than, than to the other project. Ashley, I've never used the scanner. Do I just? Is that coming through okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, yes, the amendment, you know, the percentages are different, but, you know, this is where it gets you, and if you factor in the cost of issuance at the start, which is funded by the premium, that, that gets you to the original allocations as well. Does that, does that make sense?
Yes. The, um, the description is an additional $311,000 roughly to the schools is correct. The total is, as indicated below, it's about 30% of the total to the schools.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So that's another $530,000 goes to the Ashley Reserve, bringing their total to 19 million to do the construction.
Correct, yes. The, the additional $530,002.87 is going into the Ashley Reserve. Previously, the premium for the schools was, you know, the general schools' capital project budget reserve, but now it would be the specific Ashley Reserve.
So with that, with that said, the question becomes, I-
I, I do have just a comment. So I think, one, obviously, there has been, you know, fortunately, change in the amount of the premium that will benefit the county, school, and the community college. It's a change. And I think that in and of itself makes it reasonable to then adjust the motion to handle these amendments separately. Secondly, I would just say, by mere courtesy and request by another commissioner, if we could separate the votes, it would make it, for me at least, very reasonable, since I support one but not the other. So I'm just asking simply for the common courtesy. I don't think it's going to take us that much more long to separate the votes.
And since we're being courteous to the city, I want to make sure I am courteous to my fellow Commissioner Woodbury, and we will-
Thank you.
-vote on the two separately. So I-
Mr. Chairman, there is, there is a motion pending to separate, and so you, you could ask for a second.
I'd like a second.
Second.
A second from Vice Chair Wizard Hunt. All in favor of separating the two motions?
Aye.
Whoa, whoa, that wasn't here. Excuse me. I didn't know that that was her second.
We had a-
Okay. Let, let, let's back up. We had a motion and a second earlier to approve A and B. So the question is, I'm assuming that Commissioner Woodbury, you would like to make a motion to separate the two A and Bs into two separate votes, correct?
Correct.
That's your substitute motion. Now, is there a second for Commissioner Woodbury's substitute motion?
Second.
I have a second by, by Chair Wizard Hunt. Is there any discussion of that particular substitute motion? All in favor of supporting the substitute motion, please say aye.
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 Commissioner Woodbury says aye. So that carries unanimously.
No, it doesn't.
Well, we, you said no. I did not hear you say that. I apologize. So we're six to one, passes six to one. So now we can go back and start over. Does that sound correct? Mr. Attorney?
You would vote on A.
You'd vote on A. We go back and start on A. So do we have a motion to approve Amendment A?
So moved.
So moved by Vice Chair Wizard Hunt. Is there a second? Be happy to second. Any discussion? All in favor of Amendment A, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Woodbury?
No.
Commissioner Woodbury votes no. Motion carries six to one. Amendment B, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Amendment B. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Wizard Hunt. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Woodbury?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Now, we are ready.
I'm going to turn the appointments over to our vice chair.
Yes.
This is a, a full amount of appointments, and so we're going to give it a try. The following applicants can be appointed by acclamation. Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, Tanika Butler, and Angela Nicholson. Animal Service Advisory Board, Katie Fanning of veterinarian. Community Child Protection Team, Child Fatality Prevention Team, Krista Smith. Jewelry Commission, Melvin Harris Brown, Jr. Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, Michael Liskey. And Tourism Development Authority, William Carpenter, and Christie Cox. And I make a motion that this be approved by acclamation.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 The following boards have remaining vacancies and did not receive applicants. Madam Clerk, please continue the appointments for a future meeting. Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, Animal Services Advisory Board, Community Appearance Commission, Forsyth County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Finance and Authority, and Nursing Home Advisory Committee in Forsyth County.
With a vote for acclamation, we can just all vote, right? A motion to approve? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Woodbury?
Aye.
Aye.
And the following appointments will require a vote. Commission of Ending Homelessness, Winston-Salem, Forsyth County. There will be one appointment, and the applicants are Abby Bowlin, she's a citizen wishing to serve, and Marty Creach, and you may vote for one.
Madam Clerk, I did not sign mine, but it's in pencil. There's one that's probably not signed. Oh, Commissioner Woodbury, we will need to have your vote, voice, vote for the two applicants that I just turned in.
I thought it was just one for the commission on ending homelessness.
That is correct. You need to vote for one.
Abby Bowen or Marty Creach?
Marty Creach.
Okay.
Chairman Martin, Abby Bowen received majority vote.
All right.
Community Child Protection Team, Child Fatality Prevention Team, we will have one vote, and we have two applicants, Alicia Bowles and Shannon Wall. You may vote for one.
And Commissioner Woodbury, we need your vote for Alicia Bowles or Shannon Wall. That was up there, those are the right-
Alicia Bowles.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, Alicia Bowles received majority vote.
All right.
Experience and self-reliance. We will be voting for one. The applicants are Brittany Bailey, Marty Creach, Stephen Jackson, De, De Travis Mason, John Stewart, Denise Stillwell, and Sam Whitehurst. You may vote for one. Wait a minute, I can't find mine. No. It's ours.
Commissioner Woodbury, we need your vote for one of those seven.
Marty Creach.
Mr. Chairman, Denise Stillwell received three votes.
All righty, so we're going to vote again, right?
Mr. Chairman, are you asking for a majority vote, or?
Yeah, I don't, we should have four votes, right?
If you, yes. So if you want to vote again, we'll need four votes.
Yes, we need four votes, but we had three for Denise Stillwell, correct?
Yes. Would you like to hear the second?
That would probably be great.
Okay. So Denise Stillwell received three votes, John Stewart received two.
He received three? I'm sorry, I just didn't hear you.
Denise Stillwell received three. John Stewart received two.
Two. Oh, Commissioner Woodbury, we need your vote.
Denise Stillwell.
Chairman Martin, Denise Stillwell received majority vote.
Okay, thank you.
Forsyth County Home and Community Care Block Grant, and we will be voting for one. The two applicants are Wayne Appeal and May Timmons-Moore. You may vote for one.
Commissioner Woodbury, we need your vote.
Mr. Chairman, May Timmons-Moore received majority vote.
Okay.
Forsyth County Juvenile Crime Prevention, you may vote for three. The applicants are Lynn Coleman, Philip Lewis, Gollum O'Lama, Virginia Martinez, and Tamala Payne, and Jay Robertson.
Commissioner Woodbury, could you give us your three votes?
Marvin Fullwood. I think the correct pronunciation is Gollermo Lima and Virginia Martinez.
Ms. Woodbury, for the Forsyth County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, will you please
Oh, I'm sorry, I was still on mute. Marvin Fullwood, I think the pronunciation is Gollermo Lima and Virginia Martinez.
Ms. Woodbury, the first vote that you cast, I do not see that name on the ballot. Let me double-check.
Marvin Fullwood.
Yes, let me double-check.
He's a member of the business community. Yeah, there's just two, not three. The business community. Well, that's the next one.
I see what you're saying, so this vote right here is for the at-large positions. Will you give me one more name for the at-large position? Because Mr. Fullwood applied for the business community position.
Okay. Tamala Payne.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, the three applicants that received majority vote are Virginia Martinez, Philip Lewis, and Lynn Coleman.
Okay. And is the next one coming up just to vote for one?
Yes, it's for a different capacity. Yes, and I see where it says, please vote for three, please vote for one.
Forsyth County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, please vote for one.
Commissioner Woodbury, just to confirm, your vote for the member of the business community, you had said Marvin Fullwood?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, Marvin Fullwood received unanimous vote.
All right, thank you.
The Library Board, and you can vote for three. The applicants are Catherine Lamb, Chantel Brooks, Larry Brown, Wanda Brown, Sarah Buchanan, Sarah Buckner, Sarah Hudson, Marissa Jones, no, Joyce, I'm sorry, Amanda Carroll, Wynette Martin, Karen Owens, Sarah Sabasis, and Mara Worwell. You may vote for three.
Sorry. And Commissioner Woodbury, if you give us your three votes.
Mr. Chairman, Catherine Lamb and Marissa Joyce received majority vote. We'll need to vote again on the third position, and the top votes were Wanda Brown, Sarah Buchanan, Sarah Hudson, and Wynette Martin.
So we're voting for one?
Yes.
Got it? No, Commissioner Woodbury, could you give us your votes on that one, please?
Sarah Hudson.
Mr. Chairman, we still do not have majority vote. It is between Wynette Martin, Sarah Hudson, and Wanda Brown.
Commissioner Woodbury, we need your vote among those three. Is this collusion?
Mr. Chairman, Wanda Brown received majority vote.
Piedmont Triad Regional Workforce Development Board, and you may vote for three. The applicants are Robert Eggleston, Naomi Hall Byers, Mary Casback, Lenora Martin, De Tavious, Mason, and Blair Smith, and Michael Suggs. You may vote for three.
Commissioner Woodbury, we get your three.
Mr. Chairman, Robert Eggleston and Michael Suggs received unanimous vote. However, we need one more vote to get a majority vote, and that would be between Naomi Hall
Oh, it's Naomi, Naomi Hall Byers. Commissioner Woodbury, we need your vote.
Mr. Chairman, Naomi Hall Byers received majority vote.
All right.
Okay, this one is really going to be fun. It's the Winston-Salem Foundation, and you can only vote for one, and this are the applicants. T.L. Brown, Sarah Buchanan, Marty Creach, Robert Eggleston, Courtney Fadley, Marvin Fullwood, Naomi Hall Byers, Mike Horn, Herbert Lyes, Karen Waddle, Melissa Parker, and Amanda Ruark.
Mr. Woodbury, we need your vote.
Mr. Chairman, none of the applicants received majority vote. However, the highest vote-getters are Mike Horn, Amanda Ruark, Naomi Hall Byers, Sarah Buchanan, and T.L. Brown.
I think he needed a- Commissioner Woodbury, we need your vote.
Mr. Chairman, Mike Horn received majority vote.
Okay. Zoning Board of Adjustments, Forsyth County, you may vote for one. Philip Carey Venable and John Lawrence, you may vote for one. You may vote for one.
I'm sorry, I don't think I have that one. Could you repeat that again?
Sure, so there are two folks who have applied for the zoning board of adjustment in a regular member capacity. One is Philip Carey Venable, who is an incumbent and a citizen by the name of John Lawrence.
Commissioner Woodbury, we need your vote.
I think the first name was Carey Venable?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Chairman, Philip Carey Venable received majority vote.
That completes our ballots, but I would like to say thank you to Roslyn for thinking ahead that we were gonna need these time vote ballots, so I thank you. And if I mispronounced anybody's name, I deeply apologize, because for me, I understand your pain, I've been called Whistle Nut, Wise Nut, so I understand completely, and I'm sorry. But thank you to all of the applicants, we had the most that we've had in a very long time, so I'm very appreciative, thank you.
All right, Agenda Items 29 and 30 are resolutions approving the tax assessor-collector refunds. 29 is in the amount of $3,007.25, and 30 is in the amount of $20,569.18.
Take both together, motion approved. Motion approved by Commissioner Bessie.
Second.
They're second? Is that Richard's second by Commissioner Linville? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Woodbury?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Items 31 through 33 are our reports. 31 is the July Human Resources Report, 32 is the August Financial Report, and 33 is the Fuel Surcharge Franchise Report.
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Linville. They have a second to the reports. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Woodbury?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously.
And we do have one last discussion item, and it's a public hearing for Project Flower. I'm gonna ask Kalina Fiori from our Community Economic Development Department to brief this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Chairman, and Vice Chair. I'm here to brief you on a new economic development project, Project Flower. This project represents a botanical production and manufacturing company that specializes in wellness and cosmetic products. The company is looking to establish its headquarters and manufacturing facility in Forsyth County. The proposed site is about 12,000 square feet and requires roughly $3 million in capital investment to renovate the site. This investment will include the building outfits and the machinery and equipment for the manufacturing. This should bring an estimated $120,000 in new taxes to the county in the next 10 years. In the next three years, this project should bring 41 new jobs in various roles a year. I say various roles because they're establishing kind of their joint manufacturing and headquarters here, so there will be some executive leadership positions as well as manufacturing roles, too. Project Flower has requested Forsyth County support for a building reuse grant through the North Carolina Department of Commerce. Building reuse grants require a resolution from the governing board in support of the project, and if the grant is awarded, we would operate as the pass-through entity for the funding. So just important to note, this project is specifically requesting a building reuse grant, it is not under consideration for local incentives, just the building reuse grant through the state. Any questions?
Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I do have some comments. First of all, I wanted to say thank you so very much for slowing down and reviewing the process, right? I know that I gave many grief regarding this project, but knowing that it's gonna bring jobs, it's not a storefront that is selling products, was helpful to me. So I appreciate the economic development work, and I wanted my colleagues to know that I will be supporting this, so thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all of our agenda items, Mr. Chair.